Well, then I think we should go ahead and call to order the meeting. It's 5:33 and December 21st. And welcome, everyone. Let's go ahead and bring the meeting to order. And we'll have a quick round to record who's present. So just let me know when I call your name. Counselor Deckard.
Here.
Counselor Iverson.
Here.
Counselor McKim.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
And our new addition to the council. Jennifer.
Here.
Here. Great. Glad to see you.
Where is she?
Right here.
She's in.
I see her. Okay.
There you go. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say more of her, less of me.
Okay, Counselor Crossley has joined us. Welcome to the council. And let's go ahead and proceed with the adoption of our agenda. There was an error discovered in item five as it was published, just in the way that the the fund was essentially a typo or the category transfer to funds should state general fund, jail, 1,000-0380, and not the clerk's office. Besides that, is there, are there any? Does anyone have any additions or removals from tonight's agenda? Okay. With that correction, then, I believe we can go ahead since it's just a minor correction. Is that correct? And approve.
Do we need to take a roll call vote?
Move we adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Just gotta email her.
Okay. Next, we have department updates.
Right, we need to.
We need a vote.
We do need a vote.
Is Megan, Megan, can you do a?
Yes. Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. Now we can move on to agenda item three, which is department updates. We don't have anything specifically on the agenda, but I have heard from the auditor that she would like to present to us and perhaps, perhaps the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, Russell, I think is in the, it's Russell, he has his hand raised.
He could be promoted, that would be great. We'll go ahead and start with, with him if that's okay.
Yep.
Russell Brummett.
Oh, start with me. My people changed. Okay, as maybe you know, we've had our captain, Brian Davis, is leaving our office, going to the private sector. We wish him the best. We were looking at some lieutenants to promote up to the captain's position. And when we started looking at those lieutenants that we were looking to promote up to the captain's position, well, there's no one seen that we would be asking them to take a pay cut. The 20-year lieutenant would take a $1,500 pay cut. And we have one 25-year lieutenant would be asking him to take a $3,500 cut in pay to become our captain of operations. And this is also, the captain is not eligible for overtime. He's working more days per year and has a lot more responsibility and put on, put on his shoulders. I think we did speak, our head Scott, our office manager, did send Trent an email or talked with, on the phone about the situation as well.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like something we need to figure out. Are there any questions or? Counselor Deckard, do you want to provide any other info?
Sure. Michelle and I have talked about this issue in addition to the conversations that I've had with representatives of the Sheriff's Department. And it, we, our initial discussion is that taking action on this, although we don't have it on our agenda tonight, taking eventual action on this would be, in keeping with a little bit of what we had done throughout the process of aligning the leadership with the union scale in the Sheriff's Department as early as a year ago when we adopted the the changes related to the contract and keeping with what we had done subsequently to that with some of the management, keeping with that chain of command. Then even as late as last week when we had kind of reached the tail end of that where we had to fund the changes that had been instituted in advance of the WIS effort. So Michelle and I's discussion is that we need to figure out exact details on numbers, but that could be something that we could do early into the January, January month of council work and deliberations.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Munson.
Thank you. I wonder, Mr. Deckard and Michelle, if you have reviewed the grids for captain and whether the the amount of years served by the potential candidates makes a mess with the, with the grids.
I'll comment to that. Captain of operations is no longer on a grid. It is an SO position. And so with that, I believe I would like to consult with WIS as well as with the liaison because I want to ensure that whatever council decides is not going to interfere with regards to the hierarchy because the chief deputy for the sheriff. So if we raise the captain of operations, how's that going to affect the chief deputy? So, I mean, and then because we have positions in the jail that need to be in parity with these positions, I need to look at those as well. So, I mean, I need to do some coordinating with the liaison as well as with WIS regarding maybe tweaking the the recommendations with regards to the SO for those four positions.
Thank you.
And one thing, just to add to what Michelle's saying, when we initially talked about this, I think it was late last week, our, our conclusion was we want to make sure that we're doing, doing the right numbers and the, you know, whatever we're affecting, we know what we're affecting. And also secondary to that, that we can always, things can always retroactively pay for time period and served. It's not uncommon for council practice, particularly when late on this. I also wanted to mention, I don't want to get lost in this. We are grateful to Captain Davis. I know a few of us have corresponded and worked with him. And we don't want our, our technical searches for solutions and taking care of problems to get that lost. We're very happy for this new opportunity for him and of course his service to Monroe County.
Thanks, yes. It sounds like that if it's okay with the department, we can go ahead and work on this into the new year and come up with a good solution with the intent that no one's going to be taking a pay cut for a promotion. Okay. Is there anything official that we have to do or say on this particular item to make that happen?
I don't think there is. I think it's clear in your minutes from tonight, from this discussion, that you're gonna work on it and that there will be a recommendation brought back in January.
Perfect, thank you. And thanks for taking the time to let us know about the situation so we can take care of it.
Thanks for taking the time listening to it. Appreciate it.
All right. Have a good night.
You too, thanks.
It did look like also that Counselor Iverson had an update on behalf of the Health Department. Let's go ahead and have, have you speak, Counselor Iverson.
Wonderful, thank you. The Monroe County is offering free COVID-19 testing and vaccinations today and tomorrow from noon to eight at Switchyard Park Pavilion. That is located at 1601 South Rogers Street. Walk-in appointments are available, but we are strongly encouraging you to schedule an appointment at ourshot.in.gov for the vaccines and boosters and to visit coronavirus.in.gov/covid19 testing information for an appointment for a COVID-19 test. I know that a lot of you are aware that tests are hard to come by these days. And so we are not only offering this testing site at the Switchyard Park, but also our gravity testing site is open tomorrow and the 23rd from eight to four. And they are located at 171 North Curry Pike. No appointment is necessary. And continue to follow local media sources and follow the Monroe County Health Department on social media to get the most up-to-date information.
Great, thank you, Counselor Iverson. I was going to see if our auditor was available to do an update.
She is here and I need to be able to share my screen.
Okay.
If I could get permission, please. Okay. You are ready to go and I'm going to. Okay. All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. Okay, so I want to basically talk about three recommendations that I have to, to really reach pay equity for the county. And that was that fairness and pay equity is why we did the WIS study both times. And I know we've made great progress towards it this year. And following on with that, I have three recommendations. So the first recommendation, as you can see on the screen, is a concept based on a term that I'm calling a base salary. And as you can see in this model, and this model's not perfect, but it's just what the one I'm throwing out there. You, I have, I just kind of use my salary as an example, which is 6,9033. Now, obviously, we're starting with a number that is not round. So I said, what if we made that a round number for this? To look at this example with. So I, I modified this to 70,000 just to choose a round number. So everybody can see that, correct? Okay. So we're gonna skip the assessors because there's a little. Is it rolling here?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Is it rolling down? Because I'm rolling the wheel, but I don't.
Oh, we click on it.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, now.
All right, all right. So we're gonna skip the assessors first because theirs has levels and that's a little more confusing. But we're gonna start with, again, with my salary, which is $70,000. So if we chose this concept of a base salary, if you guys embrace this idea, the base salary would be at a percent for each different person. And what you do each year is you would change the, the base salary at the top. So for this example, I'm gonna put in $69,000. And as you see, it would, it would adjust this, okay? It would adjust it. You would only change this number every year. You would set these numbers and they would stay static. And the only dynamic number would be this number here. So I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna undo this one number and go back to 70,000. Okay, so the auditor at 100% would be 70,000. The clerk, 70,000. And these numbers are based on the, the minutes from the 2015 and 2015 of the 2016 budget hearings where they, where they talk and they vote about setting the auditors, the clerk and the assessor with her, with her level, including her level at the same salary. So that's why I put 100% here and 100% here. So obviously that massive. But then we say, well, we have, we have the reporter and the treasurer who make a different amount, right? And the assessors base, but we're gonna go back to the assessor in a second. Okay, so I looked at numbers close to the numbers that you picked. Obviously, the, the numbers would come out in broken decimals if, on the percentages. So I just picked numbers extremely close. For instance, I said recorder and the surveyor or the recorder and the treasurer 97%, which actually doesn't come out to 66, 962 based on my salary of this. It's 100, these are more like 100, $200 off. But with this base salary of 70,000 at 97%, the treasurer would be 67,900. The recorder would be 67,900. This, and the surveyor, if they were licensed surveyor, like a lot of counties do, they get, they get the full thing if they have a license, 100% or some number less than that if they're unlicensed. Okay, so we picked 85% because I believe the surveyor is 59,098. So we tried to, I tried to get the numbers very, at the closest. Okay, so going down. The, and these council numbers are the same way. So they would be also a percentage of this base number. The council number is $18,064, which is obviously between these two numbers here. And the council number that you guys voted on earlier that you're gonna look again at tonight was 48,886. So again, between these two numbers. So that works out to be 26% and 70% as you can see. But what if you said, okay, we like this concept, but what would happen if we, if we change this number or what would happen if we change a percentage number? So I'm gonna show you down first. Over here is 70,000 broke out on all percentages of five basis points with the exception of 66% and 33% because that's one third and two thirds. Okay, starting at 25%, which anything less than that's, okay. Which I think obviously the council's too low at 26%. But I went down to 25 because you guys are basically paying yourself peanuts. Okay, so let's look at 35 and 75%. So at the 70,000, the 35 and 75% would be 24,552. At the, at the, the base rate that I'm making, it would be 27, it'd be 24 and 51. But what if you wanted to say, okay, as we move up and get closer with what the commissioners are asking for tonight, which is 100%? We looked at some, some numbers where the council was top of the commissioners. So I did 8, 40 and 80% and 45 and 90%. Now, I didn't go past these percentages. I could have added 50 and 100, but obviously those are real easy so that it came out even with this 25% down here. It's not really meant to, to say that they don't need 100%. It's meant because, you know, obviously that's, they've had really hard years. So, I mean, it's, they've worked very, very difficult. I don't want you to think I'm asking for less than what they're asking for from them because I've seen what they've went through. Okay, so over here on, on this, this thing, each year, what I would give you is the current, if you adopt the system, I give you the base salary for the year before. I give you a base salary, like say this year you pick 70, which would up these a little bit, right? But we could go ahead and instrument this, it'd be easy to do. Then, then you could say next year, if the, if the cost of living went up 1, 2.1%, then we would just make the 70,000, make this equal 70,000 times that, that cost of living increase. And then it would do everybody's automatically, once you, once you had your set points. And over here, we give you examples of what if you pick 70%? What if you pick this and this and this? So you'd see ahead of time what they would be in real time before you made your picks. Now, I went ahead and did 100 through 95 at 1%, so you could see the difference. And then everything else, like I said, was 5% with the exception of 33 and 66. I think this is a great model because it only, it only has you picking one number each year. We, we don't have to reinvent the wheel all across all the spreadsheets and, and every, I guess I should say, every mechanism, every process that we do. Now, I said I skipped the assessors, I'm gonna come back to the assessor. Okay, so if the assessor had level three, if the assessor had level three and you go back to those minutes of, of 20, 2016 budget hearings, which I was treasured during that, during that time, so I wasn't part of that. But you look at that where Marty has, is moving to up the auditor's salary to make it equal with the clerks and the assessors, that she thought they all three should have the same salaries. Then, then that would be 70%. Then if they, or that would be 100% at 70,000. Then if they came in and they didn't have a level three, they would get, you know, some amount less. You could do it by lump sum. This one's on lump sum. You could even change that lump sum if you wanted to. Like, if you want to do 2,500, just giving you an example. Or if, you know, you wanted to change the percentage, you can just pop the percentage in here to do that. But, so this just ma- makes a model extremely simplified. So this would be the number that you're picking each time. Okay, so that's the base salary group. Well, how did I come up with this? Well, I looked over at the past compensation and I had Bree pull the numbers with, with the internal auditor and I had Jordan look at them too. And so you can see a couple interesting things. In this year, you have Steve, I did not have, it just says Catherine because it was on my computer. Steve and Tressa, we had to look at their combined compensations. For the clerk, we had to look at Nicole Browns and Linda Robbins because they changed office. But this is the total compensation of each one. Here at the assessor, of course, this is without the extra money. This is with the extra money. This is what the salary ordinance is for 2021. This is what the salary ordinance you already voted on, or you're opposing, I should say, for 2022 is in this column. And there is my salary of, of 6,9033. And as you can see, the clerk and I, once you add that 7,000 that's in the proposed salary ordinance now, Judy makes substantially more than you make here, even though she makes less base salary because really everything is salary. Okay, and the surveyor makes less than, you know, a full-time surveyor that has a license. But as we move forward into like the peanuts that you, you guys make and the commissioners, you, you can see that there's no real rhyme or reason associated with this. It doesn't match the model that Marty proposed and got voted on in 20, for the 2016 budget, in the 2016 budget mix. It's actually pretty diverse associated with that. And so, so basically, it's, it just becomes, what are we picking? But if we go back over to here and you set these relative to each other's salaries, right? Then it becomes, it becomes a, a product that is a, of a process that is well thought out with the percentages. Now, of course, you could do this this year, you could do this next year. You could not do this if you didn't want to. But I was looking for a way to say, what is the best way to make this easier so that you guys don't have to go through the pain of this year after year? And, and people really feel like they're losing or winning because this, this evens the load all the way out. Now, a- as you know, I'm term limited, I'm in my last term. So, so it will mean less to me than other people. However, I think this is a good model and is a straightforward model and I think it's a fair model. Like, I really don't care what percentages you pick or what numbers you pick. It's the model that I'm hyping here. The model that's gonna make things streamlined and easy moving forward. Now, I said I had three recommendations for pay equity. That is the first, the first, the first recommendation is that the council adopt more simplified structure of paying elected officials. Using this model that I built or a similar model that you guys could come up with, you would use a selected base salary that could be easily converted to just salaries relative to all the elected officials. And the goal is to reduce the number of salary variables, right? And make the budgeting process much easier in each subsequent year moving forward. And that is the example. The second thing that I recommend for pay equity is that you include all pay for deputy assessors for their levels in their actual salary. Not pay as a bonus. So it would receive perf, that you actually add it in, the perf retirement, so you actually add it into their salary. So everyone is paid with salary compensation money straight up that's, that's retirement eligible and that there'll be no special circumstances or bonuses. I don't like the idea of bonuses because, you know, we took away, or the council took away one person's bonus that was in emergency management. And I think the bonuses kind of got confused when the state law asked for those things. And you're gonna talk about this a little bit in the future, in the future meeting tonight. But I just wanted to say that I think bonuses is not the way to go. I think whatever you decide, whatever you want them to have, it should be rolled into their salary. Okay? For the deputy, that's deputy assessors. Okay, then the other thing is I think to make things really fair and to really achieve pay equity, we should maybe hold off on even giving that money tonight and in January, send it to WIS to review and make a recommendation which position descriptions get it and commensurate with their assessor levels and add it back into it so that we can say everything got vetted by WIS, everyone was treated the same. If, for instance, if they're a comet two, but they get, or comet three or comet four, but they get all this extra money, shouldn't they be a pat? Shouldn't they be, I mean, if it's professional work, they should be a pat one. Or, you know, something like, whatever WIS decides. But I'm just giving you an example. So again, my three recommendations are recommendation one, adopt the model. Recommendation two, include any pay for deputy assessors in their regular salary so that it gets perf and that's commensurate with everybody else. And three, send, send, you know, the, the pay levels for the assessors to WIS. Let WIS study it and recommend to you guys what is the best and most fair way to do it so that it aligns with WIS all the way across the board and how everybody else was, was treated. And an example I could give is if, if I went and set for my CPA today, then based on giving bonuses, I could come back and say, look, I took the time to go set for my CPA and, you know, that took a lot of time and expense and, and, you know, I think it's worth this amount of money or it should be worth. So, so it sets people up to say, well, with the professional certification, I would like this bonus or, you know, different bonus. So that's an example. I think sending things to WIS is the most fair way to do it. So those are my three recommendations. Do you have any questions? Before we move to Bree, who's gonna finish the presentation with revenue, revenue. Quick update on revenue.
Okay. So thank you for putting this together. I think it's a lot of good information to consider as we move forward. But just to be clear for everyone, there's no decision point on this presentation tonight. It's just a, a way of, of looking at what, what we're doing and what we're thinking about with respect to salaries. So I appreciate that, Counselor, I mean Auditor Smith. Are there any questions from council for the auditor before we move topics? Okay, great. Thank you. Embry, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I don't have much for you tonight, but I just want to be sure that you saw your monthly revenue report was sent out last week. So please, as always, you know, send me any questions or comments on that. Also, just a quick update on the budget. The 2022 budget was rolled from the budget projection software into LAL Financial. So this just means that the 22, 2022 budget is visible for departments to view until we actually close out 2021, which will be at the end of January. And you have to view it a certain way ledger between date span. So an email went out kind of describing that process for anyone entrusted. Further, I spoke with a FEMA project manager today, Arlene Jackson, on a new FEMA project for the county. So, as you know, I think I told you last update, we are working to complete the current project. That is, it's still in the review stages. We still haven't received reimbursement for that, but I'm hopeful, you know, hopefully January we will. However, we're working on this new project application just for, you know, the continued expenses that the county has related to COVID. So we plan to, to submit a claim for the ad campaign, you know, for masking up and vaccination. the, um, ad campaign, you know, for masking up and vaccination and, you know, just also other expenses that the county still has. Um, and finally, um, just want to wish you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And, uh, please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you as well. Uh, do we have any questions from council? Okay, uh, seeing none. Um, thank you for the presentation. As always, really appreciate all of the information. Um, getting back to, are there any other departments who have updates for us this evening? Terrific. Uh, let's, um, move to scrolling up in my agenda here. We are on item four, which is, um, our Board of Commissioners.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion, a request for counsel to review the policies and or resolutions regarding overtime payments to employees that are not part of a collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Okay, I think we have the Commissioners Administrator here with us as well as Commissioner Thomas. Would one of you like to go ahead and let us know a little bit more about the issue? Okay, great. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Um, good evening and welcome to Ms. Crossley. This is very exciting to have her here. Um, I'm here this evening solely, uh, to bring to your attention, um, our need to pin down, if you will, uh, rules specific to employees earning paid overtime who, um, are not part of a collective bargaining unit. Um, we generally expect our deputies, our highway personnel and our jailers to have that capability. Um, but we have some other departments that apparently also have that capability. And as we prepare for our attendance on-demand software, the rules of when and if an employee earns paid overtime versus compensatory time that goes into a bank, um, is going to have to be answered. So you've re- you've received, um, as part of the packet, I believe, the questions that I had thrown together and are hoping that you, um, can help me with um, in the not-so-distant future, but definitely not this evening. So I'm just wanting to bring this to your attention, letting you, let you know that, um, these are questions that we will need to have, um, answers for um, as we move forward with our, um, new time and attendance software, or also known as attend- attendance on demand. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, council, are there any questions for Ms. Purdy? Counselor McKen.
Thanks. Yeah, so what what does the personnel policy currently say with respect to overtime?
It doesn't specifically state. It just kind of, um, references that it's, uh, I think an option. Um, I know that, I believe Michelle and I looked at it, um, briefly. It does not give us any distinct answer, so I apologize that I didn't actually make note of that language, but, um, Ms. Rice might have it, actually.
Sounds like, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in. And, um, I did look at Angie's questions. I think they're great questions. I think we need to definitely talk about them. And as most things in county government, it's not a straight line. So, uh, it's going to involve, uh, the the personnel policy, which is really adopted by the prosecutor, the judge, Board of Judges and the commissioners. And then there are, um, certain provisions within the 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 way that the council appropriates dollars that allow overtime to be paid. So the personnel policy has a section on overtime and a section on compensatory time. According to the Fair Labor Standards Act, we don't have to pay overtime until we reach, uh, forty hours and beyond. Now, our personnel policy as a matter of policy pays for compensatory time between thirty-five and forty and does leave the discretion to earn overtime to the supervisors of managers. So if they allow overtime to be, uh, earned in their department, and this applies countywide, it says that overtime work, work beyond forty hours must be approved by the elected official or the department head or their designated before it's performed. Uh, in circumstances where advance approval is not feasible, the overtime work shall be approved retroactively and notified and ratified by the elected official prior to submission for payroll purposes. In any instance, documentation of the permission for overtime must be maintained. So really, we have departments that, um, could, pretty much any non-exempt employee could earn overtime under our policy. But we know that not every department has an overtime line in their budget. And I think that that's probably what Angie is really talking to you guys about is we have about, we have three non-contractual departments that have overtime lines. The rest of the departments don't. Because they have an overtime line built in, they are able to transfer without council approval, money from their certain line in an O one category into their over line and pay it out. So most of what we're talking about, I looked at those questions, a lot of those questions are going to be answered by the personnel policy. But some of those, uh, will require conversation between the council. So I would recommend that, you know, legal and and council representative and commissioner representative, payroll and HR, maybe somebody from, um, you know, the other, what we're calling the oversort of overseeing agencies, the prosecutor, the Board of Judges can talk. But we get this worked out. It's primarily, as you guys all know, policies are adopted by the commissioners. Salary ordinance and and overtime lines are approved by the council.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes.
Yeah, that that's definitely, that that gets at what I was, uh, what I was asking. And I guess the the other, um, but I'll defer to others and I may have another question.
Are there any other questions or comments from council? Oh, there's a wave.
Yes, okay.
Wait a minute. Oh, you were, okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I brought this question to Julie, uh, about overtime because, as you know, Chris Munch and I are working on the annexation and he and he has his regular job to do on top of that. He is an exempt employee who doesn't get overtime or he doesn't get overtime or, uh, or, um, comp time. But this is a very, very important project that's taking, I mean, literally, you can't even, you can't even imagine the time he spent on this project. And, uh, Bree and I are getting the brunt of it because it's just, it's more than a person can do and he's just exhausted. And so, um, so I guess another question is, is what about special projects above and beyond your job description? Like, obviously, annexation, nobody expected there to be this much work associated with some special project, but still has to be done. And you can't hire somebody to do a, we we can't hire this out to do, right? This is, so, so I wanted to mention that because that is an issue that I'm running into that sort of fits in the model of of overtime, uh, the trying situation of overtime.
So that's something to consider, I guess, um, with the, with the group that might get together and work on this. Um, Counselor Munson, did you have a question?
I, my question is, uh, has anybody identified, um, as disjunction between the commissioner's policy and the, uh, budget lines for, uh, overtime pay?
What's your question again, Cheryl?
I said, has anybody identified, um, a disjunction between the policy for overtime and how overtime is, uh, reflected in various, uh, department and office budgets?
I I don't think so. I'll let Angie weigh in for that. I mean, I I look at it as a lawyer. I think our policy is very generous. We go above and beyond what federal law requires. We pay people, um, you know, for example, we're not, we don't need to count holiday hours towards the counting of overtime or compensatory time, but we do. So, you know, if you get an eight-hour holiday in a week, you didn't actually sit in your chair for eight hours. Federal law says you don't have to count that eight hours towards the overtime calculation. Our policy does ca- does calculate it. We are very generous, uh, to our employees. And, um, I don't see, I mean, we're following the law. Um, to Kathy's point, there is a federal law, you know, strict test that you that you apply to determine if somebody is exempt or non-exempt. The salary for a non-exempt or for an, um, exempt employee should reflect the fact that they're going to do the job no matter how many hours it takes. So when you have a trial come up, this happens a lot with any of our offices that have lawyers. You have an enforcement action when you have a special project. Y- your salary is high enough that it should reflect that that's going to happen. You're a professional employee and you're going to, you're going to eat that. It's just how that works across the, across the nation with exempt employees. Um, and so, um, we classify our non-exempt, any non-exempt employee is technically allowed to earn overtime, that over forty hours a week. Um, and the federal law is not going to care if you earn between thirty-five and forty. You don't have to compensate. Now, we again, we do compensate because we're generous in that regard. Um, but I don't think there's a disconnect. And I think that these, you know, we can sit down and work through these issues and we're not unique. There are government employers all over the country that have figured these things out. It's not going to be hard to do. We just need to sit down and figure it out.
Counselor Deckard.
Thank you very much. And I I appreciate the the initial, uh, nature of this is, as we try to figure out how, how, how to function with overtime policy that that allows for, uh, software to account for what's happening and is consistent, uh, department to department. I do want to offer, uh, as we figure all that out, um, overtime i- is, I think, a lot of times a reflection of of what a need is in a given department, you know, the the, uh, auditors talking about the work that annexation has brought out. Obviously, that is something that is very unique to this situation, but other unique, uh, situations arrive in departments all the time and where appropriate for individuals that could be eligible for overtime. I think we have to figure out, um, what we're doing that allows that that service to the public to to reasonably happen as the the county can afford it, but more importantly, as taxpayers would expect it. Um, I don't think any of the people that are, you know, uh, animated about annexation right now would be happy if, uh, the option to be, to reach an office were not there. Um, and the details are for us to figure out. So whatever we have to do, I do think having the appropriate supervisors, departments in that discussion so that we 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 do what is is the verb of serving in county government, not just, uh, maybe what the 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 policy looks good at. I know that's a, an art and a process too.
Thank you.
I I would just like to add, um, just for clarification purposes, um, that yes, um, any time over forty hours is considered overtime. However, what the majority of our departments are doing is that time and a half is banked as compensatory time. We do, however, have some other departments who have the ability to pay it out as overtime. And so I think that my per- my point here is to is to try to get consistency and, um, and equity, if you will, for, um, for all of our employees. Um, so that if one department's employees can in fact earn paid overtime, you know, when could that happen? Can that happen at any point in time throughout the year? Can it happen as, um, I believe it was Mr. Deckard who mentioned this about, you know, there are specific times in which we know, um, it's an all-hands-on-deck kind of situation. Annexation is one of them. Little five hundred could be another because that, um, generally, um, is is borne by the court system, uh, sheriff administration, um, the clerk's office, um, elections. Those are things that are going to come up, that are going to have, um, a requirement for ex- for, I think, additional hours of people. And I believe that you guys have the authority and the ability to state when, uh, a department could in fact pay out their, um, their overtime as opposed to allowing it to be banked in the compensatory time. Because then I want to bring back that you guys have a rule that in order to be paid out for for excess compensatory time, that actually has to be approved by you guys at a public hearing. So some departments have the ability to kind of, in my mind, um, assert that requirement. So anyway, I just wanted to bring it all to your attention and, um, I know that there are answers and we just need to get them straightened out.
Margie. You're, you're on mute.
Sorry. That goes back to the issue of not every department having an overtime line. And so because, and this has not, this is not a new problem. This has been uh, probably a problem for about a decade where some departments, um, will, you know, it's let's start earning overtime or paying out overtime around the holidays and feels to other departments like, hey, some departments are getting a Christmas bonus and others are not. And so because they have an overtime line, you know, it's like miraculous that they're earning overtime and getting it paid out towards the end of the year. What's up with that? And, you know, um, county government walls talk, and so they all sort of know what's going on. And so the issue is inequity is if if everybody had an overtime line, then everybody could do that. Now, if that's what the council wants, great. If not, then let's monitor. And I think that the issue is maybe, you know, we should look at, and we've talked about this before and a couple budgets ago, should everybody have an overtime line? And or should we not have overtime lines and then make them come and ask for overtime payments? Now, you get into wage and hour statutes because of some, sorry. Uh, wage and hour statutes, if somebody earns the overtime, you have to pay it within a certain period of time. That goes back to the fact that supervisors get to give the green light for overtime. So there has to be communication. There has to be monitoring. And there really does need to be consistency in terms of, does everybody have an overtime and how is that overtime line used? So those are some council things to think about.
As far as the the lines go?
Yeah, do you want to have a line? Yeah, do you want to have a line? Do you want to have a report? For example, right now, there's no reason why we couldn't be have, uh, Kim and the financial manager pulling reports and saying, here's where, and Jordan does it in payroll. Here's what people are earning in in terms of, uh, compensatory time. Here's what people are earning in time, and every council member could look at that report for the departments that they're liaisons and we could have a, you know, standing conversation at your council meetings to sort of see where everybody's at. And then, you know, the reason to have those conversations is because you might say, oh, look, we need to add staff in that department because clearly they're understaffed or if they're earning that much overtime or there's something going on in that department. So and you guys get to obviously determine the number of employees and and all of that. So it may be something that you want to start monitoring in early twenty twenty two so that you can start having some information and data in order to form your budget for twenty twenty three.
Counselor McKen.
Yeah, and I really like the idea of of providing those, the those additional reports. I'm I'm thinking, you know, we could go back a couple of years and kind of lay it out longitudinally to see if there's some kind of seasonality to the or cyclical quality to the, uh, the overtime payouts. I think that would be really useful.
Yes, one of the people in the council office.
Okay, so I don't, I don't think that's very clear. So we have a very small overtime line, which is billed back to the city for their elections, right? And that's also what I'm talking about, the, these, the city special projects that there are some mechanisms to build back the city for the work. Like, for instance, the only person that uses the overtime line currently that we have is the AP person who has to pay all the election workers, uh, and during city elections, that's returned to us one hundred percent, right? And if we let that go to compensatory time, then the county is out that extra compensatory time doing the city's work. And the same thing, you know, with the annexation, there's some mechanisms possibly to get that money back, but without being There's some mechanisms possibly to get that money back, but without being able to collect it. You know, here's a project that's three months long. And then we have to hurry up it at the end to get the numbers in. You know, and I know Margie compared it to a trial, which you could possibly ask for a continuance. But it's in a timeframe that has to be done in this exact timeframe and possibly can be billed to someone else. So I didn't want you to think my example was meant to be to fit one model or the other. It's more the exception.
Once again, a lot to think about on an issue where we have to work on it a little bit, I think, before we can make some decisions. And I think we'll start by maybe pulling some of that information and working on that in the new year. Is there a deadline or that we have to meet for, I guess, the software in particular would be what would be driving this?
Yeah, we need this sooner than later. Actually, I think that what I would propose is that staff work on looking at, you know, how this is being earned and used by some of the departments that have the overtime line. And then, excuse me, staff could have, your staff could make recommendations to you as to some resolutions on how that might be able to be earned. Or you guys can decide that everybody, every department could have the ability to earn overtime. We need to come to a decision faster than not.
If, is part of the issue then, if one department has an overtime line in this software, all departments have to have an overtime line or is there still flexibility for that?
No, there's certainly flexibility. The question is, is how do we, how do we as a county provide paid overtime? That's the main question. Lines, don't care about.
Well, okay, okay.
You do.
Yes, right. Jeff McKim.
Thank you. And I really don't want to go off on a rabbit trail here, a rabbit hole here, and I don't want to talk about it here. But this was the first time I had heard about the possibility of recovering or billing some of the work that's done on annexation. I mean, I'm interested in this. If that is actually possible, could that information be sent to the council office and distributed to the council? Like I said, I really don't want to go off on a tangent here in this meeting. But I think if that's possible, I think the council would like to hear about it from the council office by email.
Michelle. I think Mr. McKim's question as to whether or not we could get that information was directed to the auditor, maybe?
Yeah, I was speaking with Bree and Kathy on mute. And so we were working with having the internal auditor pull some reports and that information with regards to comp time as well as overtime usage.
Bree's already ahead of you. She's already contacted Alyssa to get working on it.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Okay, and his specific question was about recovering costs associated with time spent on annexation? Is that something that, is that what you meant when you were talking, Auditor Smith?
So I just want to make sure that there's a way to capture special project numbers. Like, we say, well, generally this person, like Chris, doesn't get any comp time because he's an exempt employee. But he's working eighty hours a week, week after week during this process. That's really a city process. So if there's a way, just like election, if there's a way to get some recompense for that, we should work on that, right?
I see, okay. Okay, that would be good information to hear about via email or however you'd like to share that if you've got some specific concerns or recommendations. Are there any other council comments? We'll look at the reports, we'll get working staff-wise on that. Okay, if no other counselors have comment or a question, let's go ahead and move to item B. Thank you.
And I had a question, perhaps this is for Ms. Rice. Do I need to read this motion again since it was held from last meeting or why?
I think you would need to read it again, just so that it's in the minutes.
Okay. Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval of the commissioner's request for an amendment to the 2022 Salary Ordinance and Fund 100000068, General Fund Commissioners to Account Lines 10300, 10400, and 11012 Commissioners, and change the annual salary from 48,886,000 to 67,158,000. This is the second reading for this item as it was presented to council on December 14th.
I'll second that.
Okay. First, Commissioner Thomas, do you have any information you'd like to share with us this week?
Yes, I would, thank you so much. I just got notified that my internet connection is not stable. So if interrupt me, I will go off camera and finish. So let me know. Hopefully it'll adjust. I do want to say first, from all of us on the Board of Commissioners, congratulations to Counselor Crossley. Welcome. We look forward to working with you. Happy solstice to everyone and happy holidays to everyone in the community. And a huge thank you, because I didn't get to say this at the last commissioners' meeting, if I might, a huge thank you to all of our Monroe County employees for getting us through another tough year. And we look forward to 2022 with all of you. So here again, to address the issue of pay equity, I paid attention to your discussion with Chief Deputy Brummett. And clearly, this is an issue that resonates with all of you, is to ensure that pay is equitable across the board. And that's why we're bringing it to you. We appreciate that you read the salary ordinance last week and that you are again considering it tonight. One of the things that came up last week, we heard from one counselor that numbers and percentages don't matter. And then we heard numbers and percentages from other counselors. We're talking about pay equity. And that's how we want to leave it. But it is, you know, yes, we are appearing before you, asking for this for the office, for the members, whoever they may be in the future. It is unfortunate that we have to do this, but other department heads do appear before you to ask for increases for their employees, which is typical and normal. We don't have anyone to speak for us, but we are the executive of Monroe County. So of course, that leaves us and that's why we're here. We're the only ones who can do so. And again, this isn't about people, it's about the office and demonstration of your respect for this very important role in county government and ensuring that whoever can do this job and is elected to this job doesn't have to take other jobs on and have to be more stressed and more tired than necessary. We asked last week for one reason why we don't have pay equity for this position and for this office. And you have acknowledged we're full-time more than we are. And you've acknowledged that we are the executive of county government as state statute dictates. So we're still waiting to hear that reason. Past inequity is not a reason for future inequity. There was an issue years ago where the judges were paid, when they were paid poorly by the state, where judges were given a $5,000 supplement and it was called parking because they had to pay for parking. Well, we have a parking garage right behind the Charlotte Zitlow Justice Center. And granted, you could only rescind this for newly elected judges. But this continues to happen. So sometimes pay equity happens in reverse, right? And that's just a little history lesson that I think Counselor Crossley could hear. If you take the $20,000 pay differential between a commissioner and another elected, like the assessor, the treasurer, the recorder, then every five years, you are paying your commissioner $100,000 less. Let that sink in a moment. That is a big number. That is a big number. Every five years, the commissioner is behind their elected official colleague by $100,000. I do appreciate that Auditor Smith brought proposals to you. I have not seen them before. This is the first time I saw them with you tonight. But we are really here about pay equity for this office and I hope we can just focus on that at this moment. We're not asking to make up for all of those lost dollars, but we are asking for pay equity into the future. So please do the right thing and we don't want to be spending more time on this, just as I'm sure you don't either. Commissioner Githens, I think, has some things to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, took me a minute to get unmuted. I also want to thank the council for hearing this again. And I want to welcome Jen Cressley to Monroe County Government. Like Commissioner Thomas, I want to thank you for acknowledging that we are full-time and are executives. I guess I'd like to point out that if any employee of the county were working part-time and paid to do part-time work, but was suddenly kept working more hours and more hours and that person's supervisor in conjunction with the council agreed that that person was working full-time, that employee's salary would reflect that change in status from part-time to full-time. And the council would not do a salary increase that was incremental over time. It would immediately adjust that salary to others performing equivalent work. And this is really what the commissioners are requesting, that our salary be adjusted to reflect that shift from part-time to full-time in a manner you would do for any other county employee. I'd also just like to remind, I think more the public, but also the county council, that in addition to our role as adjudicators of certain disputes, our responsibility for county buildings, serving as a legislative body of the county, please think about all the departments we oversee, health, highway, TSD, planning, building, legal, veteran service office, weights and measures, parks and rec, HR, emergency management, stormwater. And we are also responsible for those buildings, the county administration, review of contracts. We just approved precincting and district batteries for county council and commissioners. We recruit, appoint people to boards and commissions. We are in the process of updating the county development ordinance or the CDO. We hear zoning change requests. We have created new commissions the last several years. And we're also people that folks turn to when there's a tornado or flood or other disaster. Some of these responsibilities probably were in place when commissioners were started in 1818. But a lot of these have changed over time and been added over time. And so I think that there's no other elected official within the county that has that level of responsibility that we have. Finally, last week, I think it was last week, was it that long ago? It's hard to say at this point. But Councilmember McKim indicated that two commissioners ran for reelection last year knowing the salary. And that's true. I was one of those individuals. And I ran for reelection trusting that Monroe County Council would keep their commitment to the commissioners to increase the salaries in 2022. As Commissioner Thomas said, this is about pay equity. And it's about properly planning the proper salary for this position. It's not about me as the individual. I want to make sure that we are providing an equitable pay for whomever is here. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Githens. Thanks to both of you for speaking. I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to my colleagues for any questions or comments. Do we have any counselors who wish to speak on this? Counselor Deckard.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate the additional comments this evening. And I spoke last week about the amount that is listed in this packet that I thought it was dramatic and that I was struggling mightily with it. And I'll be very direct and honest that I'm still going through that. That is not a comment on anyone that's presenting or the job or the position, but it is what it is. One thing I just want to note, and again, I go back to the numbers that we've had. In 2016, this position was 32,921. In 2017, it was 33,168. In 2018, it was 33,000, or pardon me, 33,918. And then it began to move up in 2019 from 35 until this proposed budget has 48,860. The thing I want to point out is, I understand a discussion on pay equity. The issue that I have is, historically, when I look back at what councils have done in the past, two of the three commissioners were on those previous councils, that pay was in that lower 30 level. In fact, it has gone up in recent years. And so I am not, and I'm not trying to be argumentative with that. And I'm also not trying to say, oh, we've raised this and you should be grateful. I would never do that. And that is not my goal. My point is that we can't negate the history that is recent history as well. I know that emergencies have come up. But I also know that some of those things were not reinvented in the last few years. They're things that we all sort of entered into these positions. I've never had a constituent stop and talk to me about something and tell me how much I made. And I don't think they probably care too much about that. And I'm not saying that to be facetious. Other council members know that varying times of the year, we're all doing multiple positions and roles. Ultimately, when I look at this historically and in that recent history, I do see movement. I see movement that reflects the professionalism of that job and the professionalism and responsibility with this job. And so that's some of where I'm struggling mightily. And that's not a question to you. I've heard very much what you're saying. It's just my comment on where I'm at in the work that I think that we have done in the last few years overall on those roles. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Iverson.
Thank you. You know, last week, I did not make any statement. I wanted to hear what the public had to say and to hear, you know, more about the commissioners had to share. And so I've had some time to talk with people and to do some thinking on this. And so I want to read a little bit of kind of my thoughts that have been going on over the past couple of weeks that I've considered this very important issue. You know, the Board of Commissioners come before this body with a request for additional compensation in addition to the $13,000 already allocated. Tonight, I address the second reading of this request with my conviction that resource concentration for the politically powerful is neither just nor appropriate role for a fiscal body to serve the people. Part of the reason I think this is the timing of this request. It comes at a time when outstanding issues demand answers. And chief among these is the Indiana statute is simply silent on definitions for part-time versus full-time elected officials, including boards of commissioners across the state. Additionally, this request comes when the uncertainty of the COVID-19 pandemic is again rising with Delta and Omicron variants. Based on recent statements, our hospitals are recording record-setting hospitalizations. A recent B-Square Bulletin article summed this up with the December 17 headline of "One Year After the Vaccine: IU Health at Highest Census Since Pandemic Start That Just Seems Unreal," end quote. I couldn't agree more. I mean, in addition, Monroe County and all of the other Indiana counties are seeing deteriorating situations as cases per 100,000 rise and other infection measures arise as well. While the Omicron variant is not in Monroe County in a significant way, yet, public officials have a right to be concerned. As many of you know, the Indiana Department of Health announced Friday that Omicron is finally here in Indiana. And the Herald Times ran an article even preceding that on December 18 entitled, "High COVID-19 Case Numbers Worry: Monroe County Leaders Stretch Healthcare Systems," end quote. Now, this worry that the Herald Times is talking about is more profound for low-income households who experience the lower bounds of a K-shaped economic recovery. In a paper from the Bureau of Labor Statistics published in July of this year in the Journal of Economic Inequality, the author showed that, quote, "within the majority of industries, lowest-wage establishments and the lowest-wage workers suffered a larger share of employment declines at the beginning of the recession, and they continued to experience slower growth once employment began to recover," end quote. The deepening health pandemic and the inequitable way that the economy is recovering should cause pause for this request. This request seeks additional compensation for the most politically powerful officials in the community, and we've heard arguments about the workload, the comparison with the mayor and other elected officials, and related positions across the states. But I find this in my conversations as incoherent from the daily struggles and worries for those in the council's first district. This council was not elected to ensure that the most powerful receive additional compensation on top of the $13,000 raise already allocated per position. Instead, the public elected us to ensure that we fund county government appropriately to meet public needs, and those needs are great. My point is that spending so much time talking about additional compensation for the most politically powerful diverts the conversation from crucial topics. And indeed, these are the topics that define the role of government to service residents and not those in political power. I am very proud to join my colleagues in voting for the most recent salary ordinance, an investment of millions of dollars. This vote raised the base pay of all but two categories of wage earners above $15 an hour and simultaneously made many other salaries competitive to external competition. We should continuously focus on providing protection, not for the politically powerful, but for the resilient residents of this model Indiana community, and that is why tonight I will not be voting for any additional pay increase. Thank you for your time.
Counselor Munson.
Thank you. I did speak about this issue last meeting, and since then, I have heard from too many concerned citizens in this county who are perplexed by this issue of pay equity and raising the commissioner's salary. To me, they say, please just say no. This doesn't seem right to us. Now, they're not studying this in the same way that the county council is. We focused our attention this budget year on employees of the county with a serious study conducted by Wagner Irwin and Shealy with us, and we were able to achieve just what Counselor Iverson described. And we did this with with great discussion among counselors and unanimity of this council. For the elected officials, which we had planned to study in 2022, I'm going to just reflect on what Kathy Smith, our auditor, said as she was introducing her concept of pay equity. And she said, what is the best way? Meaning, what is the best way to achieve that? Well, we heard a new proposal tonight. I don't think I am comfortable in knowing what is the best way. And until I have a good sense of what the best way is, I'm going to postpone any decision on this matter. And so to my constituents who are concerned, I will say no. For the time being, I will say no tonight and deal with this next year. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas had raised her hand. I'd like to go ahead and recognize her.
Yeah, thank you. I'm incredibly disappointed to hear that the council expects us to volunteer our time compared to other elected officials. I will continue to do the job I was elected to do, but I also will continue to have to work on outside employment in order to earn the wage that others make, working their single job at Monroe County. We have a WIS study. You have a WIS study, and it indicated a salary of a little over $61,000 for us for this position. In addition, I will continue to work all the hours that I can. I make sure that we are protecting Monroe County citizens. We did create, with you all, the Township Assistance Fund. We have worked on providing support for businesses. If we weren't here full, more than full-time through the pandemic, I'm burned out, and that's me, and I'm leaving town for a few weeks, and that will help me. But I don't think it's fair to put this burden on one group of elected officials and not on others. I think it is a real shame, and I'm sorry that it's that I know others have looked at and asked me, you know, can you be here on this date? No, I have to be somewhere else, working my other full-time job. It is a real shame. I think it would be a better service to Monroe County residents if this were my job, and I think they deserve that. So I just wanted to offer that information. I appreciate all your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKim.
Thank you. You know, I think it probably is clear that I feel a little bit differently on this this particular item than than I would say all of my colleagues so far. And so I do think that everything we've seen, by every piece of analysis we have, the commissioner's position is undercompensated. One thing that particularly kind of strikes me is that, you know, I know we've explicitly moved away from and backed away hard from the idea of classifying the commissioners with respect to other positions. And I completely support that. I think that was a mistake, and we all recognize that. But I do keep going back to the back to the grid and thinking, you know, I think we all agree that the commissioners are executives. They are certainly the county executive according to the statute. And so to me, at least, I think that their salary ought to be at least within the range of what we pay executives. That doesn't, you know, that doesn't give us a lot of guidance, but that does sort of set a floor of a little over $55,000 just based on the fact that if we acknowledge they are executives, and then that's the range we pay executives, we ought to pay them within that range. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to try to salvage something. I think based on the comments I've heard already, it's probably not going to go anywhere. But, counsel, I move we amend the motion on the floor to set the commissioner's salary to $58,000 per year.
We'll need a second. It appears as though we do not have a second for the amendment.
Unless Jennifer wants a second.
So the motion dies without a second.
Okay. Do you have more comment, Counselor McKim?
Not much point.
Your hand was still up. I just didn't.
Oh, sorry. No, I really do. I think we should be compensating the commissioners more. I think I made that point. I think the $58,000 was justifiable, but given that it's died without a second, I shouldn't use any more time talking about it.
Thank you. There's a wave. Is this from Counselor Crossley? I'm going to let Counselor Crossley make a quick comment, and then we'll hear from Commissioner Githens.
Yeah, so once again, thank you to Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Githens for extending a warm welcome to county government, and I look forward to serving with you, as well as Commissioner Jones in her absence as well. And so I've only been in this position here for just a little over a couple of days, and I've had multiple people that have come to me to talk with me about this. And obviously, do I believe in pay equity? I 100% definitely do. I also believe in making sure that, you know, department heads, as well as hourly staff, is also being taken care of just the same as well. My stance tonight is that this is such a hot topic, and me being the newbie here to counsel, I do not feel that it is appropriate for me to make this without further doing my research. The way that I would like to lead is to make sure that I have talked to folks to make sure, you know, what their talks and what their takes is, and making sure that we all are getting our take and fair share in things. And so for me tonight, as I was jotting down, I think there's a lot more for me to learn from each of the commissioners and meeting with department staff and et cetera. And for me, at this point, as I have mentioned before, I do not feel comfortable, nor do I feel that it is appropriate for me just being a couple of days in without doing some more extensive research. So for me, I am going to pass tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Crossley. Commissioner Githens.
Hi, thank you. I just want to respond to one of the comments I heard earlier about there's nothing in legislation that defines the commissioner's office as full-time. I'd like to point out that there's nothing in the legislation that I have seen that says the auditor is full-time, that the assessor is full-time, that the sheriff is full-time. All that I've ever seen indicates that these elected officials have to appear in their office one day a month to receive their salary, and that was a change that occurred this year. Before that, they had to appear one day a year to draw their salary. So there's no definition that says that any of these other elected officials are full-time. And when we looked at those grids that we saw from both WIS and some stuff I did on my own, people are all over the scale in different counties. There's no rhyme or reason for it. These were clearly salaries that were decided by the councils in those different counties, and there were reasons for them. I guess I would like to hear reasons why we're not seen as either as hardworking or as knowledgeable or as valuable to our community as these other offices. Thank you.
Do we have any other counsel comment? Or questions? I feel that my colleagues have said a lot already, and I just want to address Commissioner Githens' comment. I don't think that, I will only speak for myself. I do not feel that the commissioners are working less hard or are less deserving than other positions in county government. The information that we have so far has indicated that commissioners across the state of Indiana are not paid the same amount as these other elected officials in county government. And in fact, on average, when you look at the WIS comparison counties, the average of the initial counties that WIS polled for comparison were paying more than the average of those counties to our commissioners. And and I realize that those, you know, that included counties that we can argue are not necessarily good comparisons. Even the counties that were then selected based on full-time, they do not pay their commissioners the same amount as they do their higher highest-elected official salaries. I don't know why. I don't, maybe it's just a big old mistake. Maybe it's, maybe there is rationale behind it. I have been gathering as much information as I can, and truly, as I mentioned last week, felt that the council spent a lot of time and energy trying to find pay equity for our employees and our staff in county government. And now we are ready to turn and look at and gather more information for the decision on elected officials. I I can't, I can't vote for something that is unprecedented across the county governments in Indiana. And I don't feel that we can, in good faith, represent the people of Monroe County and grant a raise beyond what we've offered for 2022 already. I do commit to looking at this in 2022, gathering information, and and making some decisions, and I would like to see the salaries increased. I would ultimately, from where they are. 488 is where we are right now. I feel like we've made some good progress. I would like to make even more progress in the coming year. I will leave it at that. There's a lot, a lot out there. With that, I'd like to also turn it to, turn it over for public comment. It looks like we do have one hand raised. And as we're unmuting and preparing for public comment. Hi, your comment's going to be limited to three minutes, and if you could start by stating your name for the record.
Sure, sure. My name's Ellen Siffen, and I'm a resident of Monroe County. And I've never held an elected office, nor will I ever run for office, so I just wanted to say that ahead of time. But, you know, no offense to anybody here tonight, but a lot of people, just in conversation, have spoken to me, and they don't understand why, and neither do I, why it's such a big deal not to give the commissioners pay equity. They don't get it. You know, I mean, I'm just speaking from a personal standpoint, but I listened to a lot of the meetings with the commissioners, and it seems to me that they spend a fair amount of time and energy and focus and dedication to coming up with their decisions. So, I mean, it seems to me they work full-time, so it would be nice to see them compensated for that, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? I am not seeing any. And so we will move to vote. A roll call vote, please. And so we will move to vote. A roll call vote, please.
I'll do that for you. Counselor Munson?
No.
Counselor Decker?
No.
Counselor McKim?
No.
Counselor Crossley?
Pass.
Counselor Iverson?
No.
For Wiltz?
No.
Motion failed by majority.
Thank you, commissioners, for your time. We're now ready to move on to our next agenda item.
Counsel, I move to approve the Correctional Center's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 100003A0, General Fund Jail, in the amount of eighteen thousand. And in the same fund, simultaneously approval of a category transfer from the Supplies category to the Services category for a total transfer of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second.
Looks like we have representatives from the jail, Commander Crowe and our financial manager, Kristen Fuller.
Yes.
Good to see you both.
Sorry. Good evening, council members. We are asking for the additional appropriations and transfers to fund our medical line. This year, although our population has been lower than it has typically been, we have had an increase in our mental health services. With that, we've had a greater medication list, greater prescriptions for mental health medications. We've also had items that we've had to purchase for our medical department just to keep them updated. So we're asking for the appropriations and transfers to fund that line. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Counselor Iverson?
And just by a way of curiosity, does this increase in medical help include psychiatric medical help? Or is it purely physical?
I think it's kind of hand in hand. With the increase in our mental health hours this past year, they've seen where people prescribe more medications. So it's not to pay for the mental health personnel, it's to pay for the additional medications that are associated with it. That's the greatest increase.
Thank you.
And I think this is something that was probably expected when we increased our mental health hours in the Correctional Center. And I think that's something that we spoke about when we started talking about the contract and increasing the hours. So we are having, we are seeing a lot of mental health issues in the jail. And there's been a pretty steep rise since COVID came into play. And it's not just here. I'm talking with other jail commanders across the state. It's something that they're encountering as well in their jails.
Are there any other council questions? Okay, then, we will, are there any public, is there any public comment? And we will have a roll call vote.
Fuller Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Counsel, thank you for your continued support and I hope you have a good holiday season.
Yeah, happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you as well. Thank you. We'll now move on to item number six on our agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the Parks request for a fund-to-fund cash transfer of five hundred thousand dollars from Fund 9107000. Next Level Trails to Fund 1186000 Rainy Day.
Second.
Thank you. And I think Margie Rice is here to tell us about this agenda item.
I am, and I want to say that this should be the most popular agenda item on your agenda tonight because I'm here to give you back five hundred thousand dollars. And thank you very much for granting the Parks Department a five hundred thousand dollar appropriation from the Rainy Day Fund, which got us through the cash flow problems that we were having in getting our trail built that halfway connects the town of Ellisville to the Carstorm Greenway. It's complete. I've been out on it with the engineers and park staff when we sort of checked off the list to make sure everything was done. It came in under budget. And we will soon be awarding the bid for the next part of the trail that goes from the end of that trail to the Carstorm Greenway. And it will then fully connect the town of Ellisville to the Carstorm Greenway. So it's a great addition to our trail system. We are here now to tell you that we got the grant. We got all our engineering done. We got the approvals. We got the grant dollars from the DNR. So we can give you back your five hundred thousand dollars. Thank you for that. Now, I am going to plant a little seed. I don't think we're going to have any cash flow problems on the next section. Because we, I'm going to draft the contract so that we schedule the payments according to what we think the cash flow is going to be. And I don't think we should have any problems. There's an outside chance that we might run into something in the spring. Our plan is to award the contract in early January, get a contract executed in January, start construction around March, and finish this next leg of the trail by end of the summer, early fall. And then people are going to be ready to go from Ellisville to the Carstorm Greenway. So just want to plant that seed in case you see me coming back asking for more money. And it would just be a temporary thing. But, so anyway, tonight, that's it. This is a transfer back into your coffers and thank you very much.
Thank you. Looks like we have, Counselor McKem has a comment.
Thank you. I really, I want to commend, in particular, the management and leadership of Kelly Whitmer, Parks Director for, and then with the able assistance of Margie on these complicated legal matters as well. Just on their extraordinary management of this project so far. You know, the end product is terrific. I've used the new northern segment of the trail multiple times. I've chatted with a landowner that I ran into, a neighboring landowner who was initially very opposed to the project and acknowledged how nice a job had been done with it. It was very complimentary of the work that had been done. And, you know, I also commend Kelly and Margie for fulfilling their commitment to the council and, you know, to pay this loan back on time before, you know, there was really, there was no legal necessity to do it before the end of the year. But they're in keeping with, they're doing this in keeping with what they told the council when they asked for this transfer. So, you know, this just builds a lot of confidence in our trail team. And I really appreciate their hard work on this.
So are there any other council comments or questions? Ms. Rice, did you have another comment?
I just want to mention, when Jeff McKem mentioned trail team, he's on that team too. And so he gets credit and we have Commissioner Giffens who's on that team. We have legal, highway, parks. We have a whole.
Counselor Munson.
Yeah, Counsel Munster, yes, Munson's on it. Who else? I'm missing another department.
Ron, Surveyor.
Surveyor, Surveyor is great about like mapping out when we are starting to dream where we want our trails to go. They start mapping out things for us. And this is not, it's not a governing body because it's just, you know, a group of people who love trails who are sort of putting their heads together and we don't have any real authority. But, but we are sort of guiding the county trail projects. And so thanks to Jeff too and to Cheryl for their input because, you know, Cheryl is our resident bridge expert. So when we need to get, because we talk to Cheryl. But anyway, we're just sort of a group that gets together every single month and we talk about where we want to go with trails. And so, you know, we're moving forward and I think the public, I've been out there too and had a lot of public people say they loved it. Most people tend to gripe about the trail at first. And then I like to tell them, you need to tell us thank you because this trail just improved your property value. So how about you tell me thank you? And so generally, generally, they come around. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Munson?
I want to also shout out to Kelly Whitmer, Margie Rice, and Jeff McKem for their leadership on this. It's been, it's been great to see how this was accomplished. And I want to thank council members in years previous, many years previous, for building the Rainy Day Fund because we used it in just a perfect way as a loan that would let us get through a serious cash flow issue with grant projects. And so thank you to all past council members.
Any other council comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Fuller Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to item seven on our agenda now.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to create new account lines and appropriate these lines in Fund 81110000, Crisis Coag Supplemental Workforce Grant in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand dollars as outlined on the agenda.
Second.
Great. And I believe Ms. Shell is going to represent the Health Department for us.
Yes, this is more of a housekeeping issue. Council approved the appropriations at the last meeting on December the fourteenth. But I failed to recognize that we needed detail. And detail is, what I mean is the account lines that need to be appropriated. The council approved the categories. And so I worked with Penny this, over the last week. And so the account lines that she needs appropriated are detailed in the agenda. And she said that as they finally figure out the salary for the school liaison, then she will do in-house transfers with regards to the FICA and the PERF and that kind of thing. So, so right now, we've just got three lines that we need to be created as well as appropriated for her budget lines.
That sounds pretty straightforward. Are there any council questions or comments on this item? Counsel Iverson?
I just wanted to reiterate that these funds were available to a lot of communities across Indiana. And our hard-working team at the Health Department in Monroe County really didn't leave money on the table. And I'm really happy to appropriate these lines. They really did a great job here and really helping out our schools.
Yeah, looking forward to seeing the work that they do. Any more council comment? Public comment? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item eight with the Prosecutor's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Prosecutor's request to amend the 2021 and 2022 salary ordinance in Fund 10000-0009, General Fund Prosecutor, and add account line 13425, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney, Felony Sex Crimes, Thirty-five Hours, EXE2, SO Attorney B exempt.
Second.
Thank you. And I believe Ms. Shell is also going to lead us through this item as well.
Yes, thank you, counsel. As we were updating information with regards to positions and making changes, it was discovered that this position needed to be moved into the General Fund. And that was due to the depletion of a stop grant, I believe it was a stop grant fund. And council has in the past always allowed the Prosecutor's Office to move this particular position in when the funds are running low. So we're asking for the 2021 and the 2022 salary ordinance to be amended in order to place this account line into the budget so that the salary can be completed. And I do believe Beth Hamlin is on here as well. She's been on leave, but she is back just recently. So if you have any questions for her, she's available.
I sure am.
Welcome, Ms. Hamlin.
Just to clarify, I just want to clarify that we don't, we pay, when I have to project a budget for my stop grant, it's prior to our budgets being completed with the county. And so sometimes I miscalculate what the raise might be. In this case, it was exacerbated by the fact that they extended my 2019, 2020 stop grant three months and then applied the money. The budget was off for this past year. What I've done in years past, when I've had a slight under calculation in my stop budget, is paid it out of two lines in county general that exist so that I don't have to come back and ask for the additional out of PS Lit, which is where we pay the other half of these salaries. But this year, I was notified that we needed to adjust the salary ordinance to allow us to pay out of those lines, even though it's something I've done in years past. Does that make sense?
Maybe. Counsel McKem?
Thank you, Ms. Hamlin. So are you going to need an appropriation or do you?
No, we just transfer whatever we have, you know, outstanding or leftover in county general in the tens. We've often had positions that have sat unfilled or whatever. And that's why I've been able to capture the gap in those lines in years past.
Okay. And how long is the gap for?
It's for one pay. It's just to make up the last pay of this year.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason I asked for the 2022 salary ordinance to be amended is we are anticipating that this will need to happen again because of the raise increase due to the WIS grids. So that way, we don't have to come back and ask for this to be added to the salary ordinance at that time, so.
Thank you. Are there any other council questions or comments on this item? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then let's have a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you all very much. I apologize for the confusion. Thank you all very much. I apologize for the confusion.
Thank you. Have a good night. Now we will move on to item number nine with the Assessor's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2022 salary ordinance in Fund 10000008, General Fund Assessor, regarding the compensation of the Assessor Appraiser Certification Level Two and Level Three Differential for the Assessor and Deputy Assessors as outlined on the agenda.
Second.
Great. And I believe our assessor is here to talk with us a little bit.
Yes, ma'am. Can you all hear me?
We can. Welcome.
I'm so excited. I'm actually on Zoom at my house. So anyway, I think it's good. I can't see you, but I can hear you. Thank, first of all, I want to thank all of you for all that you've done for my staff and myself. And I want to tell you, I'm in total agreement with what you are proposing tonight. I think most of you know, I've talked to a lot of you, Marty Hawk, who is my liaison, Margie, and of course, Council, Counsel, Counselor Wiltz has been on this. Everybody has asked a lot of good questions. And I understand how, for whatever reason, a lot of, a lot of you did not understand that when you get the level two and then you get the level three, the code says it's stacked on top of each other. And a couple, three years ago, you guys were so generous and so gracious to us and we appreciate it. But I can see the confusion and just not realizing that's what happens. So I think it's very appropriate to, for the level two to be 2,000 and the level three 5,000, but not to stack them on each other. So I just say thank you and I'm sure you'll have some comments and some questions of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Assessor Sharp. We have probably, well, are there any council questions?
I would like to just make it clear that we are talking with regards to the amendment for the general fund and not the reassessment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
We have them split into two different items. So yes, this is item A.
Okay, sorry. I'm in total agreement with that.
Are there any council comments or questions? All righty then. Are there any public comments? All right, we will go ahead for a roll call vote then on the item.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great, thanks. And now we'll talk about 9B.
Counsel, I move to, I move to approve the request to amend the 2022 salary ordinance in Fund 1224-0000 Reassessment Fund regarding the language and stipend amount regarding the Assessor Appraiser Certification for Level Two and Level Three for the Assessor and Deputy Assessors as outlined on the agenda.
Second.
Great. So this is the, the part that is directly referring to the stipend for Level Two and Level Three. And, oh, Counselor McKem.
Oh, and I, I mean, I'll, I'll make comments. You sounded like.
Okay, all right. You just happened in line. All right. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Ms. Sharp?
No, this is where I jumped ahead. This is the Level Three certification stipend, whatever you want to call it. And that's what you, you know, that's what we had. And that's what, we're going to move it from 7,000 to 5,000. And like I said, we're fine with that. And I just appreciate what you've done.
Thank you. Now we'll go to council comment. Counselor McKem.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Sharp, for your comments on this. Yeah, I mean, I definitely, going back through all of the old documentation on this issue, looking at the original memo from the DLGF, I can definitely, I mean, this, the idea of having the Level Three stipend as being not inclusive of the Level Two definitely came from specific guidance that we had received at one point. And I can see why, you know, I can definitely see why it came that way. I think that is not kind of the natural way that most people would, would interpret those, these kinds of stipends. And so I, I'm definitely in favor of cleaning this up. I don't think it was the council's intention to stack the two stipends on top of each other. So I think this fix we're making makes a lot of sense, but also recognizes the, all the hard work and the, that the deputy assessors put into getting those certifications.
Counsel Iverson.
I also appreciate the level of detail included in the packet. In particular, I wanted to publicly, you know, acknowledge the work not only that has been done by staff, but also in particular, thank you to Kim Schell for including the email chain from WIS that helps allay some of, I think, the, you know, admitted confusion that Judy was talking about earlier. So I think this is, this is a good way to acknowledge there's a big team working together to come towards a good solution.
Any other council comment? Counselor McKem, is your hand a legacy hand?
It is a legacy hand. I apologize.
Don't worry. I just, I try and scan here. Okay. Is there any public comment? I see no public comments. So if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp.
Thank you. And I wish you all a happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Now we'll move on to item 10.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval amendment to the 2022 Salary Ordinance Section Disclaimer Regarding Grant or User Fee Compensation Language, which was read in to the record Tuesday, December 14th, Council Regular Session.
Second.
So we did have a moment's discussion on this last time. But do we have some background or more information, Shell?
I'm bringing forth this amendment to add to the salary ordinance with regards to some concerns that had been brought forth by the health administrator. As she wants to ensure that council will cover costs with regards to grants when the grant is short, just like we just did with the Prosecutor's Office. And just because, you know, sometimes they have to, you know, do their budgets before council actually approves, you know, the council raises or the, you know, employee raises and that kind of thing. And it was also a concern of a council member too to have this language included with regards to possible user fees as well. So I worked with Margie Rice, our legal counsel. And this is the amendment that we feel like would be a good addition with regards to, you know, the council just ensuring that while they have a grant and that grant becomes short, that they will just continue it, you know, funding that position for that moment, you know, until maybe the grant is, you know, discontinued or the user fees and then look at it again. But, you know, just at that, so somebody doesn't go without a paycheck kind of thing.
Do we have any council comments or questions?
And Margie, do you feel like you need to add anything to that?
No, I think this is just good record keeping. So I think it's, I think you explained it well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Deckard?
One thing I, I wanted to say is I, I appreciate this language going in. And I also appreciate the comments about funding of a position when we're in the, you know, the crease of things, the application process, you name it, all those things that, that don't always conspire with the Monroe County budgeting needs, schedule, et cetera. And I think certainly it's been the values of this council to do just that. I think that we should always be reflective of that. I will say this, future councils that aren't us could always do things differently. So one thing I will say is, you know, for the public watching, I, I always talk about the grant money that comes in. There are people fight hard to get to help the people of this county. One thing I think that we can always ask of future public officials, candidates for office, et cetera, is where do you stand on those things? What do you think about outside dollars coming in to help our people? We could certainly, it's been a value of this council to not only support those programs, tout those programs, but try to do what we can. We know that we're not the administrators of most of those. But we're certainly supportive of whatever we need to do to help our folks. So I wanted, I wanted to make that comment because that is not a lost policy distinction that we can expect of elected officials. And I think the taxpayers of this county do just that.
Counselor Munson.
So I had a question for Ms. Shell, and that is, will there need to be an appropriation made before this, before the paychecks can be, be cut and provided to the employees?
That will be a request that comes directly from the department. And then I was just going to say, this doesn't guarantee that this position will continue on. You know, this is all relevant to the grant or the user fees. And then the department, when this happens, is supposed to ensure that where it gets moved to, that they have the appropriations without asking for additional appropriations. So they're supposed to be able to fund this within the fund that they're moving it to.
Available position. Okay. Thank you.
I had a question as well. And when we put this into our salary ordinance for 2022, does that carry over then when we do our next year's salary ordinance? Does it default in as language that then we could remove, but by default would be there?
Unless there's a request to remove it, it stays in.
Okay. Yeah, that's great. Okay, thank you. Are there any other council comments or questions? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. And now we will have item B.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval of the amendments to the 2022 Salary Ordinance due to council's approval of updated employee job descriptions, classifications, grids, and other corresponding information needed that is outlined in the council packet.
Second.
Ms. Shell, do you have a summary or information on this as well?
I included in the packet a detailed list of what the changes were. And I mean, basically, all the changes were due to the grids being updated and voted on on November the 30th, the approval of job descriptions, as well as within the job descriptions, the new classifications. And so then I, talking with the departments, we also include like the probation department salary grids. Those are set by the state. So we included that. The courts updated their transcript information. So we, you know, I tried to make sure that all the information relative to being paid for any employees is included and updated. So I made all of those. There's one section that, just like Counselor Wiltz referenced, was when a, when a section does, is no longer needed or relevant, it's removed. So, and with that was the strikeout of the in-grade supervisors. And we had a section in there that said we were going to, you know, grandfather certain positions that were in-grade supervisors. And because council approved the WIS job descriptions and grids, that's no longer relevant in the 2022 salary ordinance. So that section regarding in-grade supervisors, along with the listing, has been struck out. So it will not be in there moving forward. We do have, because of the WIS grids, that I wanted to point out, we have a total of 16 employees who will be flagged as outliers. And these are due to, which, this is due to employees receiving a higher salary than what the WIS grids recommended. And that's because we had the kind of the funky, we kind of created some salary grids. And so with that, we had those 16 people and those have been flagged and they will be tracked. And they will remain at that level of hourly rate until they catch up with the grid. And then they'll be moved accordingly as they reach that. There will probably be several of them fall off depending on what council decides for 2023. Because there was just, they were just a small amount change wise, in change, is what caused them to be an outlier. So, other than that, you know, I tried to highlight everything so that you could, you know, like look at the pages to see what the absolute changes were in the packet. So if you have any questions with regards to the amendments of the overall salary ordinance.
Are there any questions from council? Okay. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, could we please have a roll call vote on this item?
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. And we are at number 11 on the agenda, which is our Boards and Commissions item. And I did want to acknowledge the resignation of Rema Payne from the Women's Commission. I believe that leaves us with a couple of openings on that commission. So this is a all points plea for any interested, capable, wonderful women to submit applications to our Women's Commission. Ms. Shell.
I just wondered, you know, that the council appoints four positions to the Women's Commission and we have three openings once Rema's term ends at the end of the year.
Okay, so it's time to recruit.
It really is a good commission.
It is.
It's really wonderful. Yeah.
And active. And I will be looking around and trying to find some folks. We do have some other transitions, I believe, with boards and commissions at the turn of this year. And Michelle, are you going to be compiling those in some way? I know you've been tracking and contacting everyone, but we'll take a look overall at some point in the near future. I think, are you talking, because it's on mute?
Yes, I sent a, an inquiry out to everyone whose terms were, you know, coming up. And I've received back three. So I've got to make some phone calls, you know, prod some people, you know, that kind of thing. So, and then as, as I get them, I'm going to put them in Dropbox for the entire council and let you know. So.
Okay, great. Sounds good. That's, we'll keep an eye out for that. Are there any other council comments or questions on boards and commissions? All right. That leads us to council comments. And I just asked for comments, but now broader comments. Anybody have anything they'd like to share? Councillor Deckard?
I promise I will not go as long as I did in PAC, and Councillor Iverson had to hear this as well as Councillor Hawk. I have been thinking a lot about all the things that we can do to help our neighbors in this community, particularly in this pandemic. And we all know there's a million ways that you can do all sorts of help and all sorts of things. And the thing that occurs to me is that we have tremendous resources available to us through vaccines, boosters, or the third vaccine, as people are calling it. And this all has made me think recently about when I was a kid, and I would fight my parents just tremendously about getting a shot. And Dr. Schaefer, who's over on First Street, I would just argue with him. Oh, I'm, I'm not that sick. I'm not going to do it. And I can still remember the words that my mother would always say to me. If you get this shot, you're going to feel a little bit better. And you know what? I did do that, and it helped. And look, I'm saying this not as a Democrat, Republican, you name it, whatever. I'm saying this is one of your neighbors. I come from a family that has been in this community, eight plus generations. My daughters are nine. And I say this to you as a neighbor. If you have not yet gone out, got your vaccine or your booster, please consider doing that. We are a big, small town, big, small county, however you want to put it. We are neighbors. We, we, we look out for each other in every other situation. We know that numbers are going up. We know that when numbers go up, it's not good. It's not good for the people that work in our hospitals, that drive in our patrol cars, that work all throughout county government and beyond, and in those stores particularly that you shop at. So please, whatever piece you need to have with that, I urge you, I beg you to think about that. And particularly as we enter in closer to this holiday season, we, this is a precious place. We do have to look out for each other. And at the end of the day, that is what will be remembered of all of us. So please, think about that. The Monroe County Health Board and all the work that they've done, all the penny coddles done, putting locations out, please think about using that, using something you trust, whatever it might be, to protect you, your family, your neighbors, and, and all those folks that we depend on when we go out and about our day. Thanks for indulging that, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Councillor Iverson?
I wanted to take this opportunity, this December 21st, to wish all Monroe County staff, volunteers, and elected officials, very happy holidays. I wish that they can be merry and bright, and that you can help celebrate safely with your family and friends. Happy holidays.
Councillor Crossley, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'll just keep it brief. I just wanted to, again, say that I'm very excited to join my colleagues here on the county council and look into work and be a sponge and absorb everything that I can. I've also had the pleasure this afternoon and now this evening to have a second home here at the courthouse. And staff has been wonderful and has welcomed, welcomed me with open arms. And I've been able to meet a lot of few, meet a lot of people, get to know or try to get to know them. It'll be interesting to put faces with names and masks and things like that, but I'm willing to learn. And I'm very much excited. And to echo the sentiments of Councillor Deckard and Councillor Iverson, we obviously see that COVID is definitely on the rise, and we can all do our part by continuing to stay safe, to be a good cheer in this holiday season and beyond, and to continue to look out for one another by staying masked up, continuing to be able to, if you have a chance to get vaccinated, please, please do. I know we are all fatigued with this pandemic, but we can do our part and we can get through this. But it's going to take a collective body of all of us. And to everyone to have a very, very happy holiday season and a prosperous 2022.
Thank you. That was lovely. Councillor Munson?
Yes, I want, I want to just echo what all my fellow counselors have, have said tonight and add that tomorrow, the days are going to start becoming longer. And happy winter solstice. We're going to have more sunshine week to look forward to.
Absolutely.
So hap- happy new year and new start to our calendar.
Michelle, oh, no, that's a legacy hand. It's my new term. All right, everyone. Happy holidays, happy solstice, be safe, and we will see you in the new year. Take care.
Thanks.